Staff and the commission knows, I adore this room much more than the other room for a variety of reasons of friendliness and articulism and all that. We have a new planning commission member that's present today. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like it if we started with the tables, commissioners, and then people went around and introduced themselves. Then, just to be cozy today, let's ask the members that are in the audience to just introduce themselves too. Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Don, I'll do that. First off, I'm going to be your David. Are we up and running now?
Yep.
Okay, let's go ahead and talk immediately to order first. How about that? Can we go ahead and get a roll call first?
Alderman Boyd.
President.
Commissioner Bradley.
President.
Commissioner Brown.
President.
Commissioner Peoples.
President.
Commissioner Reese.
Not president.
Alderman Cohn.
Not president.
Commissioner Benton.
President.
Commissioner Boas.
Not president.
Commissioner Vines.
President.
And Chair Strather.
President.
All right, with the quorum, as we just heard, we have a new commission. Why don't you introduce yourself if you would, just, you get 30 seconds.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jake Ben. I'm an architect with Mackey Mitchell Architects, and with that firm about three years now. Live over in the West End neighborhood of the city and excited to be a part of this group. Thanks for having me.
There are staff members around that is not there. Why don't we go ahead and just have them?
Well, look, why don't you introduce the rest of the board to Jake?
Oh, sure. I'm Jeffrey Boyd, the frilliest alderman in town, representing the 22nd Ward.
I'm Randy Vines, and I'm Alderman.
Earl Stroff is serving as chair, a resident of the city, that's what this means for it.
Commissioner Bradley, President of the Board of Public Service for the city.
Patrick Brown, Representative for the Mayor of the City.
Denise Peoples, Representative in the Comptroller's Office.
And then the staff. Switching over to staff, David Meyer in the City Council's office. Done. And responsible for me. Don Robb.
Director of the Department.
David Crowe, I've been called the director.
Was there a guest over here?
Gary Neal, I'm Mary Pam.
You have a guest with you? You're running, you have a guest with you? You always go with your hat. Isn't your hat with this? Patrick Kekelkamp, Attorney, working with District Project Committee. And at that point, we also have the, one of the best commissioners has just arrived, so we can all stand and give our, introduce yourselves if you have a new.
Tracy Boas.
Hi, Tracy. I'm Jake.
Okay, with that, any other items, business items?
I just noticed that we have.
All right, and yes, you have a guest with you, Tracy.
Oh, nice.
Oh, yeah. Okay, all right, yes. Your next.
I'm Josh.
And you're with?
Sitting in.
Okay.
Working on development plan.
Okay, very good.
And I did notice, we went around the room, we have an equal number of attorneys and architects in the room, so.
Is it a good thing or a bad thing?
Uh, it's summertime.
All right, there's a few things on our agenda. One is, the first thing, we want to look at two different minutes being approved. The first one, the minutes from May 2nd and the public hearing. And they were sent out earlier this week, so you should have had an opportunity to review them. If there is any action, we'll entertain that inside. Is there a move to second it? David, can we have a roll call for the approval of the May 2nd minutes, uh, May 2nd, 2018?
Alderman Boyd.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley.
Captain.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Peoples.
Hi.
Commissioner Benton.
Hi.
Commissioner Boas.
Hi.
Commissioner Vines.
Hi.
And Chair Strather.
Hi.
And motion passes with all but one person voting aye.
Okay, with that, there is, we had a special meeting on May 7th at 11:45. There is a, you can receive a copy of those minutes. I'll entertain any action on that.
Move for approval of minutes, May 7th, 2018.
Is there a move to second it? Can we, number roll call, which, ask you.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Captain.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Peoples.
Captain.
Uh, Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Vines.
President.
And Chair Strather.
Aye.
And the motion barely passes with five voting aye.
And it passes, okay, very good. With that, we, uh, the first order of business is, Cecilia is going to present to us PDA 3518, and I think we have that in our package. It's all on you. Good evening.
First item on your agenda for review is the Chapter 99 landing study and redevelopment plan for the Shoto Avenue-Jefferson Avenue. Sorry, Avenue, Silver Street, which contains a redevelopment area, all intended for a dispossessment of the La Pea Square redevelopment and landing study. The Alti Area Board approves the landing study and redevelopment plan on April 24th. The entire site is 12-point, 107 acres, and contains one whole building. It is 55,600 square feet and located on Southwest corner of Jefferson and Shoto. The remaining parcels are generally vacant. The total cost of development is approximately $146 million, and the proposed developer is Shoto Avenue Partners LLC. The area is entirely in law by a square local historic district and partially in the National Historic District. By partially, I mean a very small portion of the Southwest parcel of the area is within the National Historic District. This portion is outlined in red in the key map on the bottom left. There is a piece of a building, we'll keep it there. Any changes to that piece of building will be reviewed by the Cultural Resources Office, and the entire development area would be followed by a local historic district.
What is that piece of building that was said?
Um, I couldn't give you a whole lot of details.
As Dan stepped out, let Bill tell you about that one.
There was a candle baker's shop in 1830, and right across three from it was a huge tannery store, two of the tall ones. It was in perfect taste, about 10 years ago. They know how to take a three-decker.
But just to give you some more detail of the site, I'll briefly walk through some images. Key map of the bottom left corner is green, which hopefully helps to orient you. This is the only existing whole building of the redevelopment area. It's located on the corner of Jefferson and Shoto. This is an image of the area just south of that building, across from La Salle Street. The piece of building discussed earlier is on the site in the background of this. This is the southernmost parcel outlined in red. The site is vacant, but it's building. It does have some trees and growth that have grown over the years, and the parcel is, has been vacant for over 50 years. This is an image of the parcel to the north of that. It's a large parcel which runs from Shoto and has a nice view to the tree now. Finally, the easternmost parcel of the site which runs to Shoto and is adjacent to the South. This is the plan which has been shown to the commission in the past for the site, whether refresh your memory or for the reading you haven't seen yet. The intent is to provide a similar scale to the existing community on the southern portion of the site and to gradually increase the mixed use of uses and the height as the development goes north towards Shoto. The redevelopment plan does reinforce this, and I'll further explain how in its design. This is the site as one of the strategic land use plans, not the zoning. We will review that in a moment. As you may already know, the strategic land use plan, often known as the FLEU, is a general guide, a sort of high-level look at the city's land use, what it should be and what it is. It's intended to guide the type and character of development of the city. The subject site contains both special mixed use and neighborhood development areas. The FLEU describes the neighborhood development area in orange as an area which is suitable for new development and which should provide opportunities for new residential construction or associated services which complement the adjoining blocks. The special mixed-use area in blue is intended to be developed as a unique mixed of uses in which makes the city land unique. Staff has reviewed the redevelopment plan against the FLEU and noted that it does comply with the strategic land use plan. In addition to the strategic land use plan, the redevelopment plan needs to comply with the neighborhood plan. When the neighborhood plan is reviewed and adopted, reviewed again, the FLEU ensures compliance before it proposes to provide rationale for changes to the FLEU. The neighborhood plans are completed or amended with the great community input to ensure that the community is on board with any plans or changes. And the most recent amendment to this neighborhood plan was done in March of this year and provides this detail as seen on the screen. I won't go into detail for each category, as some of them myself fairly tell the planatory, but I wanted to delve into the details of the special mixed-use area. The neighborhood plan limits this area to 12 stories in height, which is just south of La Salle Street, a section south of La Salle Street that continues to La Salle Street for the eastwards, and then go south of that. That area should be limited to six stories to provide for the transition that I discussed earlier. Additionally, the plan specifies what uses are or aren't our appropriate, and if you're wondering what the difference between a special mixed-use area and a mixed-use area, is essentially the special, special mixed-use area is a little bit more specific in design, height range, and use. This land use plan has been included in the redevelopment plan. So while the land use plans are generalized, the land use and tax care, the zoning designations of the city's code requirements will comply with the land use plan by much more specific details than FLEU things like height restrictions, structural setbacks, the many things. This is the current zoning for the site. If ever simply realize the redevelopment plan for you for consideration, the zoning map will need to be amended. For instance, the J industrial zone would not allow for mixed-use residential commercial uses that are being proposed. In summary, the planning urban design agency, staff finds redevelopment plan to be in conformity with the strategic land use plan and the more detailed, strong-sided, for any redevelopment plan, and this redevelopment plan and landing study does not comply for the use of unused domain and staff recognizes the void of the Chapter 99 landing study redevelopment plan. Just before I finish up, I'll give you a brief reference of what is surrounding the site. I provided a key map of each of the images so that you know what it is up, however, I won't touch all 23 of the outlined items, just to give you a flavor. I'll start with number one and I'll work my way around. On the left is the building just south of the industrial building of the subject site. On the right is a two-family unit on the west side of Missouri just north of Hickory Street. That's south of that and toward building B, that we talked about earlier. And we have two, a two-story residential and commercial split use building on the northwest corner of Hickory and Missouri. And on the right, there's an image of townhomes on Missouri, on the southward up the hill. This image is probably the best to exhibit the level of grade changes that are present on the site. Now, heading further down, east down Hickory, we have some more townhomes, you can see from Hickory. And on the right is a church on the corner of Hickory and McKay. Heading north along Hickory, the Hickory-Jawed McKay, you'll see some more townhomes. Both of those are townhomes. Just north of those townhomes, four-family unit on McKay and a single-family unit, you see some of that. And on the right, we've made our way up to Shoto Avenue to the filling station, which is just east of the subject site. Going across Shoto, we have a number of industrial buildings. The image on the left is toward the east side of the site, and the image on the right shows the character of the industrial buildings on the west side of the site. This type of building for a contingency is always the corner of Shoto and Jefferson. Across Shoto and Jefferson, we have the filling station there, and just south of that is the fire station. If you have any questions, and the developer is also, the technical developer is also.
Okay. Any questions from the commission at this point? Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, can you go back to the slide that had the zoning pieces?
Absolutely.
Keep going back, right there.
Yes.
That little bitty blue of mixed use.
Yes.
I was trying to orientate myself with the development plan. What's supposed to go, that's a little small piece of property, but the number's thin this way.
Yes.
That entry.
The developer.
At the moment, that is actually a garden, but it's a mixed-use. But most importantly, the reason we don't want to build near it is the house immediately south of that is owned by an elderly lady, and actually, all of those houses are, have got one of, do they have any, serve her?
So there was no plan to build anything there, it's just?
It's going to be an entry court or something like that. We'll stay away from that.
Is that piece being rezoned as well? Potential rezoning you had mentioned?
No, that was the rezoning that I was discussing that would, you know, like, in order to make this plan happen, the J.
Just the J.
Rezoning. But the, the neighborhood plan does have some proposed rezoning, including a special use district which would incorporate the J area and the H area. It sort of go into a little bit more in the resolution. But the J would still need to be rezoned as an underlying district since the special district, special use district is overlay, and that wouldn't, the J wouldn't fit in that.
Okay, so walk me through the process. So what we're doing today is we would be approving the redevelopment plan, but the redevelopment, redevelopment plan is contingent upon the neighborhood plan. Are we approving the neighborhood plan too, or the neighborhood?
No, the neighborhood plan, the amendment to the neighborhood plan was already approved.
Right, okay.
What I walked you through is essentially the current condition of how it complies with the neighborhood plan and the strategic land use.
So this already matches up. Once we approve this, we're already matching up, okay.
So the orchestra and the dancers were in sequence here?
Right.
The developer's been working now more than six months with the neighborhood about what was proposed on the site.
Mm-hmm.
We in March had the planning commission meeting that included the public hearing to change the neighborhood plan to be in sync of anticipating what he had been talking about with the neighborhood. That included what Cecilia just said, some really sort of technical things about getting the zoning right, which included that we're now suggesting and allowing a special use district to be created here in the zoning category to affect this.
Okay.
So that's a check mark. So we're not, we're not going to have to go doing something retroactively with the neighborhood plan.
Okay.
It's the orchestra and the dancers are saying. The developer, of course, in this case owns the property, not wishing anything to be a, be jinx here, but of course, he is, the developer could go away. The establishment of the Chapter 99 is having all these parameters to say if you're going to get tax abatement or whatnot, you will build it per the Chapter 99, which is very much reflective of what Bill's been telling the community and what we adopted from the neighborhood plan.
Right, which has been a kind of a neat process because there's three different developers, right, Bill? Four?
It was just three partners.
Or is this two? It's three partners. But, okay, so the three partners is one developer, and then you have the Adamone Brothers that are.
That's true, that one piece that we're not going to do, and that we're helping, is that along with one, that along brothers.
Right, and I remember when we were talking about the neighborhood plan, there was a hiccup or there were some issues. Has that been resolved so that the whole project can move forward?
I'm not sure which.
It seemed like there was a lady there that was part of the lobby request, and she had some concerns.
She had some concerns.
Okay, all right, so everything is on board, everybody's, as Don said, this orchestra's playing, right? Okay, cool.
Don said that.
Oh, did I make that up?
I'm getting pretty down now. So, I mean, really, as we talked earlier about the history of this site, which was mostly an industrial site, when you pressed gas on it, it blew up and made the national news, and tried, try and try again to get something to happen here. This is A, being comprehensive, B, it's been vended by the neighborhood, and we're now using the city's toolbox on these 12 acres, not just a single parcel, but these 12 acres to effect this change. And there's some subsequent things like changing the zoning that we've already set the stage to be approvable, but that's still a task that has to happen.
I have a question. So as part of the redevelopment plan, I notice here, in the street types and land use principles, it says how the buildings must address the street. Is the actual setbacks of the building something that could be addressed here, or is that into zoning that comes later?
Good point. So, so the other thing that we should mention out is, we've seen renderings at the time for the neighborhood plan from the developer. We've seen them in an exhibit here. What we're looking at today is really a product of one of our sister agencies, the Land Councils for Redevelopment Authority, and it's that attachment which is their product.
Okay.
Some of that is made to be very specific for this development, because we've said we're pushing the envelope on it. Some of it is more standard language, and they will do that review in conjunction with the zoning. And this particular case, the zoning will have a new feature that will be particularly descriptive about height, but I will hide that. The zoning has its own setbacks, but it will be.
Separate from this.
I shouldn't say separate, it's in conjunction with that. What's in there that concerns you?
It's nothing necessarily, well, I suppose the concern is that it doesn't say, it says the buildings, the redevelopment should address the street, but it doesn't say anything about what the actual setbacks should be.
Fair point. That is a way to be slightly cookie cutter and apply it later appropriately to this design.
Okay. Don, can I add something to that? The other agency behind it, the city right behind you.
Right. Yeah. It's actually, and it's a third. It is, as Cecilia said, it's in the local historic district, which also has other standards. And so, if, if, if a reporter was standing behind me listening to all this, they would say, holy God, it's ungodly hard to do something in the city because you see all those layers. But with a talented developer, an active neighborhood, and doing this orchestration so we're in advance, this will all work out smoothly, including the historic district standards and that will apply to this area are being tweaked because it's a, as Cecilia showed you, internally, there's not much there, and around it, there is something there.
My, my main concern was just, you know, you mark on your redevelopment plan, this is an area that's potentially going to get a light rail stop in front of it, don't want a parking lot in between that and the building, so. And I, not that I would accuse you of doing something, so goes, but, you know.
They won't, the other standards won't do that, but you will find that many of those things in these redevelopment plans are sort of cookie cutter folk one time.
All right.
Any other questions from the commission? You're done, any action?
Second.
Is there a move to second it? Can we have a vote, David, please?
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Mr. Vines.
Aye.
And Chair Strather.
Aye.
And motion passes with all present voting aye.
Move 3518.
So while we switch, Chairman, I'll mention, of course, we do very little site plan review as this level shall engage others, but this will be a project that we will see again as, as the special use district gets created and the zoning gets determined for that J, they will both come back to us, and the beauty of it all is it will be, it won't make it to the commission if it's not in conjunction with the neighborhood.
With that, we will hear more from Cecilia in a little bit, but right now, we got Norman giving us a street naming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the commission. This is a proposed naming of a new public street within a subdivision that was approved by the city's Board of Public Service. The proposed name is Jonas Hubbard Street. This was initiated by a petition that was submitted to the Planning Urban Design Agency not that long ago. This is a new, one-block-long public street that was recently constructed and dedicated to the city, so it's going to be open. As you can see on the, on the map, it's a, there's a short street, there's a short street, bounded on the north by Bill Street and on the south by Carr Street, it's a curvilinear street. It's located in the Carr Square neighborhood, about a dozen blocks or so from this very building that we're in. The petitioner is the Carr Square Tenant Corporation in concert with Alderman and Tamika Hubbard, who is the alderperson for the Fifth Ward. Rodney Hubbard is the director and manager of that tenant corporation that submitted the petition. He's here tonight, Mr. Hubbard, in the corner there, and will be available for questions. We don't do that many street names in the city as the city is built out. I think the last one was, if you remember, Margaret Bush Wilson Street, like, for your disposal, that was built in the Midtown area. So for the benefit of the new planning commission members, and for those of you that have been around, let me just briefly run down the process to the naming of a new public street. We have no jurisdiction over any private streets. It starts off with a petition that is filed by the developer or owner of the property and the alderman that represents that area. That petition is distributed by us to three entities, the clerk of the Board of Aldermen, the Board of Public Service, and we all know which Bradley, planning commission member here, is the president of the Board of Public Service, and the postmaster for the City of St. Louis, which has its offices across the street from, from our building. We asked the BPS and the postmasters to provide recommendations to us as to whether that proposed street name makes sense or not. Asked that they do that within a 45-day time period, and they were very, very responsive. Thank you, Rich. If a street naming is controversial, the agency can hold a public hearing during a planning commission meeting. I don't think that is needed here tonight, but that option is available. But tonight, the planning commission will review that petition, and as part of the vote, you have three options. One is to approve the petition just as it was submitted. You can approve the petition but add some modifications or, or conditions to that if you'd like, and then the third option is to disapprove the petition. If you elect that third option of disapproving the petition, we then notify the petitioner as well as those three entities of the decision. If the petition is approved, as is, or with any modifications, we prepare a board bill and also notify those three entities again. bill, um, and also, um, notify those three entities again. A public hearing will then be held by the Board of Alderman Streets, Traffic and Refuge Committee, and of course, another planning commission member here, Alderman Boyd, the chairman of that committee, uh, so they would hold a, uh, a public hearing on that. The board bill would follow the city's standard legislative process, and if approved, we would notify relevant city departments that the street name has been approved. So that's sort of it in a nutshell. With that as a little bit of a background, we talked a little bit about the location of the street, um, and the street itself. This is a, uh, map showing the Carr Square neighborhood going back in nineteen ninety-nine, and, uh, so the, uh, so Carr Square is bounded on the north by Cass, Tucker, Cole, and Jefferson. This is Prudigal, a big landmark in the neighborhood. This area here that has all those rectangular building footprints is called Carr Square Village, and most of it is a low-rise residential complex. It used to be owned by the St. Louis Housing Authority, now owned and managed by the Carr Square Tenant Corporation. Also includes, uh, some villary buildings, this is the Neighborhood Center, Carr School, which is not in particularly good shape, and, uh, Carr Square Park, which was recently named, uh, Loretta Hall Park. A lot of changes have occurred in, um, Carr Square Village, many of those rectangular building footprints are no longer there, some of those, uh, buildings have been renovated, the whole layout of that area has been drastically redesigned. So this is an aerial photograph, uh, from two thousand fifteen, so it's a couple of years behind, um, but you can see in red there, that's the, uh, the new street that's been built. On both sides of the street, you can see seven lots that were created by a new subdivision, and, uh, those seven lots, uh, there's a proposal to build seven, uh, single-family homes that would front onto that new street. The, um, Carr Square Village, uh, rectangular building footprints that I was thinking of earlier are those that are shown here with the brown rooftops. This is the Neighborhood Center, uh, that's the school, this is the park that was recently renamed, and what does appear on this aerial photograph, given the fact it's, uh, three years old, is that entire block right there has been redeveloped with a new thirty-nine unit townhouse complex called, um, Loretta Hall Townhomes, and, um, so that's part of this overall reconfiguration and redevelopment of the, uh, Carr Square Village project. This is the subdivision plat, um, that was approved by BPS. As you can see, it's very short, uh, with a traffic circle, or a circle in the, in the middle, and the egg lines here are the lot lines for the seven, um, proposed, uh, single-family homes. So these are some photos of the new street. Uh, the one on the left is looking northward from Carr Street, the, the street would be one-way northbound, uh, photo on the right, uh, is looking southward from Middle Street. The street is, uh, roughly about a football field long, three hundred thirty feet and a thirty-five foot right away, so it's relatively short and narrow. In the center of that, uh, street is the, um, you can see a circle, and in the middle there is a raised decorative service, and I understand a statue of Reverend Jonas Hubbard, the person who this street is proposed to be named after, a statue would be erected there at some point in the future. And should point out to you that that circle there has some sidewalks around the perimeter of that circle. Here's some photos of the lots, uh, surrounding the street, um, the lots are roughly about eight thousand square feet in size. Mr. Hubbard told me that these would be, uh, if erected, it would be the only detached single-family homes in the entire neighborhood, not just Carr Square Village, but the entire neighborhood, which is, I found surprising. Um, and, uh, here's some photos of the Carr Square Village, the Neighborhood Center is on the left, and the typical, uh, multi-family building types that you see in the neighborhood are shown on the right, particularly brick to the Village. And lastly, these are some photos of the new townhouse complex I mentioned that was recently constructed just west of the new street, the Loretta Hall Townhomes complex. So with that as a background, uh, the basic thing what we're doing today is, uh, reviewing the proposed name of that particular street. The city has some criteria for street names that were enacted fifteen to twenty years or so ago. So a street, what I'd like to do is to go down that list of criteria, uh, add staff comments, which regards to how that street measures up to those criteria, and take it from there. So a street may be named for any person, place, creation, or number, provided that the first criterion is that it is conducive to good city planning and protection investment of residents and elders and property planning on this street. The petition may reference the fact that Reverend Jonas Hubbard, uh, Junior was one of the first residents of Carr Square Village and lived there for about sixty-one years or so, and was a beloved figure in that neighborhood when they had the nickname of Dad. Apparently, everybody, uh, called him Dad, including in the, uh, in that complex. Second item is that it has significance or value as part of the development heritage or other cultural characteristics of the city. In this case, uh, Mr. Hubbard was apparently instrumental in forming the Carr Square Tenant Management Corporation, uh, which apparently was the, one of the first, or I think the first, uh, tenant management, uh, corporations in the entire city. Third item is that it does not detract from our historical heritage by renaming the street with greater significance than the proposed name. In this case, uh, there is no, uh, existing street name item is applicable. Uh, next item is that it names or renames all segments of the same street within the city's boundaries, yes, the entire one block, one block long street would have that same name, so no problem. And then when a street is to be named or renamed for a person, person, the petition should not be filed until after the first anniversary of the person's death. Mr. Hubbard died in two thousand five, so there's no problem with that. And then the last item, there's a little bit of, of addressing, is that only such person's last name shall be used as a street name unless additional identification is necessary to prevent a duplication of streets, street names in metropolitan areas. So an example of this is, in the case of Margaret Bush Wilson Street that I mentioned earlier, her full name was allowed to be on the street because there was an existing street name of Wilson Street located on Hill, so that obviously was needed to differentiate that from Wilson Street. Um, in this particular case, the submitted petition acknowledges that many of Reverend Jonas Hubbard Junior's family members share the same last name of Hubbard and have held or hold public office in the same general area as the new street. And the petition further states that using Reverend Hubbard's full name in the street is distinguishing from other family members, and recognize Reverend Hubbard for his involvement and role in the development of the Carr Square neighborhood. Uh, so at the risk of possibly setting a precedent for future street names or renaming, staff feels it makes sense to name the new street as Jonas Hubbard Street so as to clearly identify the person that the street is named after in the neighborhood where the shorter street name of Hubbard Street could cause some confusion as to whom the street was named after. Hope that makes sense. Um, in terms of comments, uh, staff finds that the proposed street name meets the criteria for street names that we just went through. Staff has reviewed the recommendations from BPS and the postmasters, both who recommended approval. You've got copies of their letters and their resolutions, so staff is recommending approval of the petition that would, uh, Jones Hubbard Street as the name for the new public street. And if approved by the planning commission tonight, staff will prepare a board bill for consideration by the Board of Aldermen, that's been drafted, and if approved by the planning commission tonight, that will be introduced by Alderman Hubbard at Friday's Board of Aldermen meeting, and if in fact that board bill is approved by ordinance, staff will be notified, uh, no city departments, utilities, other parties, other institutions. I'd be happy to answer your question, Mr. Rodney Hubbard, uh, representing Carr Square Tenant Corporation.
I'd invite Mr. Hubbard now just to speak on this, does anything you'd like to say?
No more than, uh, this has been a, a long journey, and, uh, even though it's my father, you know, he was a great man. He mentioned me, he mentioned my family, and, uh, you can look at our history to see that we are a public service, uh, but it started, you know, not with him, it started with his father, and because of, uh, in fact, he was Jonas Hubbard Junior, and my, my son, my, uh, brother, who worked for BPS for thirty years, is Jonas Hubbard the Third, and, uh, all of them was ministry except for my brother, and, uh, just to get back to Jonas Hubbard himself, uh, you, you know, even when I was growing up as a kid, and I was one of his children, he, he, he always, you know, believed in family values and made me, uh, incorporate those family values which, uh, which made me be what I am today, which made me begin to do that to my children. So if any of y'all know, any of my kids should know that they're about serving the people, they're about core, some big core family values, and that came from a, a great man. I mean, uh, he, I was born, when I was born, I was born in Carr Square Village, and, uh, him and my mother stayed together all along the way, and they had that, uh, that, that, just that family values that, you know, you had to be in for dinner at six o'clock, the lights would come on, then come home. So it's, I could stand here and talk about him for a long time, you know, I think he was a very powerful man. When he put me on his shoulder and walked across the lake taking me fishing, and had my mother in one hand and had me on his shoulder in the other hand, and took me fishing before I was even go to kindergarten, that's how great a man he really was in terms of looking out for his kids and, and his community. And in regards to the community, they did call him Dad, because everybody had respect for him. He helped everybody out, and, uh, they respect me today because of that. I don't run Carr Square Village because I'm tough, I run it because it's respect. So it's a lot that comes from him that's in me, and I, I just really hope that y'all vote for this here, uh, it's been a long journey, I'm getting this here done, and, uh, it's just something that, uh, a legacy that I would like to leave in my body.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioners?
I have just some trivial questions. What's the distinction between naming a street, an avenue, a drive, a place, or a street? Is it just the petitioner pick one of those, or is there a criteria?
I, I don't believe there's any distinction formally between what kind of a street gets a designation of avenue versus a street, but they're informally are, are some sort of guidelines, for instance, uh, a street that tends to be more monumental or important may be designated as a boulevard, um, if it's a, a street that may end in a cul-de-sac or, or there is no access beyond the intersection, that may get a designation of place or court, uh, but in terms of avenue versus street, I'm not aware of any sort of formal distinction, although we have Rich Bradley here from the Board of Public Service who deals very closely with streets.
Very inclination, I mean, we obviously know what a court is and a boulevard, but those two right there, you know, a street is somewhat monumental, like a state street, and I, I would agree with everything you said.
Other question is?
And hopefully he won't see us bring too many cul-de-sac.
I don't know if it's true, but maybe at one time you said that, um, streets and avenues are uncertain, uh, historically.
Okay. Um, so, i- if you're doing a new street, because I remember doing a new street, but it wasn't like a new name, because that, when we did Arlington Grove, we had the fifty-four-hundred block of, fifty-three-hundred block of Thirdoza, then we had, it skipped over to the fifty-six, fifty-seven, so when we converted an alley to a street, we gave it fifty-five-hundred Thirdoza, but I don't remember going through the gymnastics of going to the planning commission, maybe the developer did it. Is this near the same process, or is there a difference if you're standing in line kind of sort of, and adding a series of numbers?
In some cases where in effect a, a street is being extended, I, I think there may be some decision made that it doesn't need to go through this particular process, although I, I was not aware of this particular street that you're talking about. Uh, there are, not to get too technical, but there's, uh, sort of two avenues for street names and renames. One is a street that is being named in a new subdivision that's been approved by the Board of Public Service, that is a fairly streamlined, um, process. Uh, there's another process, uh, for, uh, naming a street or renaming an existing street that isn't in a, uh, a subdivision that's been approved by BPS. That goes through a more lengthy, um, process whereby, um, a petition needs to be filed and, uh, more than fifty percent of the property owners whose parcels front on that street must sign the petition indicating they're in favor of the, the naming or renaming of that street, and it also calls for a, um, a public hearing, uh, that again would still be held at the Streets and Traffic Refuge Committee, but it would have the, uh, additional requirement that a, a public notice ad be placed in a newspaper and that it be placed in the day prior, um, to that public hearing. That is not required, uh, in, in concert with clerk of the Board of Aldermen, we determine that that, that additional requirement is not necessary for this particular, um, proposed street name.
I'll give you a shorthand, planning practice, is, I just reminded Mary Ross, who represented this area a long time ago, uh, amended, uh, our street name change ordinance, so that we were careful that in the situation where there's a street that's, should continue, but there's a hiccup and it doesn't, and in that area, it now becomes if there's a street on the same pattern as the city grid system that's east and west or north and south of it, it keeps the name of the street that we, that you would be on and you would continue to travel.
Okay.
And that's what we do in our process. I will tell you that the honorary street naming system that is done by the Board of Aldermen, you know, can happen to be at a street corner or just one block, for instance, unfortunately, Delmar Boulevard, made to be honorary for President Obama, only has segments of it that type, and the, and the substantive change, Robin talked about the petition process, and, and we don't do that.
But the address, the postal address does not change, am I correct in understanding that? Because for instance, I know Alderman Mohammed just recently did a block in honor of a pastor in his war, and it doesn't change.
Correct.
It designates the name, but doesn't change the postal address, am I correct?
That's correct.
It also need to mind that the planning commission, as, as well as PDA, have no role whatsoever in honorary street naming.
Okay. Last question, and it's a little off this, but street rededications, is that something that comes through the planning commission when a, when a private street wants to be given back to the city? It doesn't.
Because if dedication through Board of Public Service, we do that.
To give it back to the city.
We do consolidation plans, dedication plans, re-subdivision plans, we involve.
Okay, is, there's a board bill for that too? After that?
It's actually just approved by the Board of Public Service, I believe.
Okay.
It's only going through the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, I'm done.
This is a public street, this is a new public street that is maintained by the city that we're designating as under the identification of Hubbard.
So, so, so you need to hear, as, it's the two main bodies prior to the Board of Aldermen and the students, is Rich Bradley and his crew have overseen to make sure the construction is to our standards, so it can be dedicated to the street, they've accepted the dedication now through us for the street, for it and the naming, you guys are naming it.
Very good. Alright, with that, and seeing no other questions, any action? Move to a per second. It's been moved to seconded.
Yes, sir.
Called for previous roll. Any objections? There are no objections in previous roll. It has been approved, it is now named after your father.
I'll, I have to go to the board.
I have to go to the board. Yes, let's get that to be presented. It will get introduced as, as, um, Friday by, by Alderman Hubbard.
And I spoke with Alderman quite earlier today, and, uh, agreed to accommodate, uh, Alderman Hubbard in terms of getting a, a public hearing to see if it's possible to, um, get that formally approved before the Board of Aldermen.
So this is the last action item for tonight, uh, actually, now that I think about it, so all a little different. The first one was twelve acres, multiple parcels per chapter reading ninety-nine. I love that, because that means somebody's doing it in an area versus just trying to get a tax payment for a single parcel. We don't name streets very often, um, and now we have something that we also don't particularly play.
We're gonna travel a little bit further east down Middle Street for this one. Uh, the next item on your agenda is a proposed land modification for Al Restaurant, which which is located in the near North Riverfront neighborhood, northeast of the intersection of Biddle and Third Street. The commissioners are the property and business owners Pam and Gary Neal, they are present at the meeting. They are the descendant family of the original owners of Al's Restaurant, Albert and Louise This is the local theater map, the subject site is outlined in red. This is the building, it's a, circa nineteen hundred originally. This building was used as a sugar exchange warehouse. Over the years, warehouse went through purpose to sell and trade stock, dry goods. Then it was a floo, while the second floor was rented as housing, and finally in nineteen twenty-five, Louise Barone opened Al's Restaurant. She kept the business out and running through the prohibition, through the Great Depression, and World War II. And in nineteen sixty-eight, the adjacent five-story warehouse had a significant fire and fell on top of Al's. This was the building before that fire. You can see the building just behind it, it fell. And this is as it stands today. In lieu of allowing the fire to close the restaurant down, Al Junior, Al is the commissioner's father, repairs the damage and rebuilt the business into the five-ninety statehouse that it is today. As you can see, the building has undergone a number of changes over the years, and so the petition is not for the sort of renovation of the architecture of the building, but for Al's Restaurant as a cultural and historical landmark. Therefore, if approved, as long as Al's Restaurant is up and running and owned by the descendants of Albert and Louise Barone as it is now, the restaurant would hold its landmark designation and be subject to review of the Cultural Resources Office for any changes or alterations. Should Al's Restaurant cease to operate as such, the building would be considered eligible for demolition. As you can see here, the specific land use plan that is named is this, and the entire surrounding area as a special to the mixed street area. See, Planning and Development Agency has reviewed the submission against the specific land use plan, as well as applicable neighborhood and topical plans have found that it is in compliance. The neighborhood's plan being the downtown development action plan, and the topical plan is the North Riverfront open space redevelopment plan, which has undergone a couple of decisions. That recommends approval of the landmark designation of Al's Restaurant as presented in the petition. Just to quickly orient you, surrounding areas, mostly vacant and a little parking lot, you can view the other subject site. This is south, here we can go to the Oogian Beach Casino and Hotel, away from the distance. Looking east of the subject site, the city adjacent parking lot, and the Ashley Energy Facility. And finally, looking west of the subject site. If you have any questions, we can answer them, and the commissioner, Pam Gary Neal, are also available, also Cultural Resources Director, with a couple of questions regarding the sort of designation.
Question. So are there other landmarks designated in the city that have been designated as such for being by the same person for a long time?
Uh, no.
For the first time?
I mean, this is one of the longest exams. This is owned by the same owners, and they're descended at the same location the entire time. There aren't a lot of properties in the city that would be eligible for this kind of designation. That's what makes it special in this case, to be a landmark.
What's the benefit? To whom? So what's the benefit to the owner?
So...
A landmark is, if only, as long as they own it, it's kind of a landmark, but if they ever sell it, it's not, and it's eligible for demolition.
So, a couple things. When you think about history in the city of St. Louis, you can think about things that are designated by the feds, historic districts. We do local historic districts, and we do individual landmarks. Dan, how many individual landmarks are there?
Hundred and seventeen?
Yeah, hundred and seventeen, all across the city, created by simply this process and an ordinance. They include such things as the Jack Buck statue, that was, that's at Busch Stadium. Includes bigger buildings. It includes a couple of things that we've done in the last, not in the last two years, but before that, when Betsy Bradley was here, remember, Cultural Resources in St. Louis is not just historic preservation and architecture. We now call it, it's the Cultural Resources Office. So there is a case where the Mariangelou House was owned by an absentee owner, got purchased, and it's now a city landmark. The Tilly's Corner has some architecture on it, and it's identified as a landmark. So it's, you know, if you go to another city, you might choose to say, boy, I want to go to, I want to eat someplace that I know is not a cookie cutter, just get created last week. They're free to put it on their, their hour times, at the city night, that type of thing.
Okay. So what would it mean to you two to have your restaurant designated as a landmark?
It would be very much a very high honor. It would be giving respect and that to my grandmother, who started it way back in that time for a woman to dedicate a purchase of business and her business. And she did it mostly in honor of my grandfather, who was sick a lot of that time. That would be an honor for her to carry on her legacy, going to my parents, and if they're both deceased, and so now it's myself and my husband, and we have daughters and grandchildren that we would like to see it continue. It's kind of a nod to, to the North Riverfront area. It's an area that kind of gets around rap a lot of the time, and, you know, when we started out there, and I can remember, there were so many buildings around there, there was so much activity with the riverfront and the industrial area around there, and slowly but surely, everyone just kind of faded away and moved away, and that's why you see so many of the vacant lots and the vacant buildings and that, and we've always had this respect for that area. If you ever go into our building, we honor that on the inside with the decor. We had a mini opera set designer who painted a huge mural in there based on the eighteen hundreds of the way the riverfront actually looked in there. We have a lot of old prints and things. We've done the best that we could of barring the catastrophe of the fire and Biddle Street widening that changed the architecture and the look of the building, but we've tried to maintain that as much as we could. So it would be an honor to our family, and I would hope that it would bring people to light, to see that there is something good and positive in the near North Riverfront area, and to kind of spark some other things that might happen around it. And we did recently, one more, real quick, is, I don't know if you watch PBS at all, but we had a gentleman who did a little mini documentary on us, and it was in the historical cultural category, and he, well, he won an Emmy on it. So it was recognized for that as well.
And a process thing to remind ourselves is that Dan and Cultural Resources could put forth a property petition as to being a city landmark, and Alderman could, or the owners of the property, and so...
What is Al's in the footprint of the proposed football stadium?
It was on the very edge of the ground.
So you guys survived, you are survivors.
So, so, it's, so, a couple of things on that front, is the pictures that Cecilia showed around Al's Restaurant, there's not much there. And in fact, some people were a little spooked by going there, because there's not much there at, in our time. I, in fact, was told by somebody, oh, are you going down there? Be careful about the shell, you know, you might see some shell casings. So, the moral of that story is yes, the North Riverfront had that opportunity for the stadium. Didn't happen. Stadium opportunity probably provided a little chock town for people with an uncertain future, for folks that were bought in option contracts for what would happen. And that was a big, kind of a thing. We are continuing to work in that area, and there are some things that are being proposed that are sort of linear in terms of parks, but are not as big a conch as a stadium is represented. So, as Cecilia said, the North Riverfront, the, uh, plan, development plan and parks plan, has had some reiterations since the one that's posted up. To try to be a little bit more organic, and to be more people oriented, so...
So, with that, I understand our approval of this will move it to the Preservation Board for action at that point, that's what we're voting on. So any, any further questions? Hearing none, any action? Our call for previous roll, any objections? Hearing no objections to previous roll, we have approved thirty-four dash eighteen, and it will be moved forward to the Preservation Board to take the next step.
I was scared of the classics, that's why I was like, wow, this is the biggest thing.
Well, they could tell the stories many more than I could, but you know, when you think about, about history, and you think about buildings, and you think about spaces, and then you, then you think about activities. So, you know, there are many a corporate board meeting that's been held at your place with decisions that affect the city of St. Louis. What were you rattling off to me that one night? Frankston Acture had a regular table. The Emmy documentary, Tom Bell, we have Steve there tonight, I know we...
Yeah.
What happens if Al stays at Al's?
Now that we've proved it, you can give us a fifteen-second commercial, what's your, you know, what's your menu, your price point, you know, you can give that real quick.
Well, Pam and I, we actually contact the restaurants, fine dining restaurants in St. Louis. First of all, we support all the restaurants in St. Louis. We don't look at ourselves as better, we support them all, and we wish the best for all of them. As far as our price pointing, Pam and I call pointing, Bruce Chris, Eight-O-One Chop House, Wardens, and we try to price ourselves a dollar less for the same items that they have, but we also include a salad with your entree, you know, that's a little, and we also include the handmade sorbet that used to be made by Baldos, which used to be on the hill, and they still make the handmade sorbet and ice cream for us, but sorbet comes with a meal also. We work really hard, and, and, and again, just want to say God bless all of you, we...
And your time, and your hours?
On Tuesday, the Thursday, five to nine, and we're open Friday and Saturday, five to ten. And our head chef just retired a year ago, January, after sixty-three years. She learned how to cook from Pam's grandmother, who was an immigrant from along Italy. And our salad bar gal just retired after sixty-eight years. And the neat thing is that their children are the ones that are the chef and the salad bar, and they've been there about twenty years.
And so you're, you're a landmark employee.
When you go to work at Al's, you retire at Al's.
Very good. That's a great one.
And two, 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 two quick things, and I just forgot one of them, so with Don talking, we one thing. Did you hear all the other restaurants you mentioned in town? After a little bit of process in the Board of Alderman, they'll be able to add one more thing, they're a city landmark.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Oh, I know what I was supposed to add. Okay, if we come and just have a drink at the, at the bar sometime? Come take a look at our Emmys, we're proud of them. We've got a picture here, if anybody wants to see it.
Thank you, thank you. All right, very good. With that...
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As you put that up on the screen, one of the things that has occurred, that's a great pleasure, is that Cecilia has joined us, and you said this is about a month into it.
One month.
Yep. And so, that's great news. Some of the things that we're doing in Scottsdale and Valley Wire for a while, while we're slow staff, we're getting re-engaged and up, so, so the delegated items, Cecilia is now tracking, watching, and, and working with them, so we'll be a little bit more structured with those in the future, and may bring a couple of them, like you remember every once in a while, there'll be something that's particularly unique, even though it's under an acre that we're bringing, so we'll be doing that. We have one more item, as we see that there's none, none up there, is our next regularly scheduled Wednesday is July fourth.
Oh, a half month. So, so... It will not be meeting on July fourth, that is?
It will not be meeting on July fourth. We customarily do not...
We could meet at Al's.
We customarily do not meet in August. But two months without a meeting is, usually doesn't work. So there's two things, we can all pull out our calendars and pick a day in July, or you could let us poll you a little bit later, because there's a certain magic, that's some things that we need to do, we need to take up within forty-five days, so...
Make a motion for polling.
Okay.
We don't need to vote on it, but let's, we'll defer to the, to the staff for polling for the next meeting.
We'll probably be in later July, as opposed to just some, a week from, from July.
One question about the delegated items, a lot of action on the Hill, is that a combination of rehab or new construction, or is that one development?
It's mostly tear downs.
Okay. I've seen a lot of new stuff going on on the Hill, so it's an interesting place for residential development. I'm just curious.
There was a massive development that's also eleven acres, that was going to be more multi-use, multi-family, is now having more single-family residential.
And Don, just to go back to our meeting for July, let's consider telephone, a conference meeting if, if it's not, if it lists an item...
So, 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 oh, I forgot, there's a caveat, is, the September meeting is the Wednesday of Labor Day week. I'd like to get a little straw poll now as to anybody here that would not be able to make that Wednesday. The week, the, the, the single digit in, so Wednesday after Labor Day...
September fifth.
Yeah, September fifth. Because where we're really keying is we have some, one, it's a little bit slower time, two, we have to be geared up from the Board of Alderman, and when they go back in session, have things queued up for them in, in the teens of September. So the September meeting's usually pretty important. If we can, if, if I know we're going to be able to do that September fifth, September fifth meeting, I get a little bit more flexibility to suffer, so...
Very good.
So if you go back and you say, hey, I forgot, we were supposed to be out of town that week, shit, man, I'll...
Michelle, thank you for keeping us informed, we're connected and replying to that, we're going to be, she does good at being sure, we reply to her. And, and, I mean, so thank you for that effort.
Jake has joined us tonight with not much early prep. We also have...
I brought a new stuff I brought you, too.
Thank you. We expect that. We also have another new commissioner, Nicole Young, owner of a local engineering firm, will join us as an engineer, doesn't need to...
Another engineer.
Well, that'll be what you're going to say. Wish that any other action, any other questions?
The chairman of neighborhood development, he may not have any more hearings until , I don't know when, how will that impact, uh, planning department? It's more of a SLDC thing?
Hmm, I'd say it impacts the people that are waiting for the legislation to occur.
So it gives an opportunity for planning department to approve a lot of stuff before it gets to the Board of Alderman?
We always do that with due diligence. We, we haven't missed a year.
No, but there are times that the board bill gets passed by the time it comes to the planning commission.
Well, that's not...
The development bill, right. Yeah, the tax payment bills. We don't approve tax things, no.
Definitely, yeah.
And it's because the bills are saved, I think, recommended by the planning, or something like that.
Yeah, well, the bills are drafted by LCRI, they have the responsibility of making sure that the sequence is such that...
Yeah, and they couldn't be introduced unless they have a sponsor. Yeah.
I really can't pass them. I won't belabor the issue.
Yeah. What we're talking about is there's a number of sequencing things about timing that is the officer and the dance players aren't doing at the time as much as we should.
It's an all-beat. Very good. Good job.
Second.
The move in terms of seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, have a wonderful month.